To order, meeting of the Carver Board of Selectmen, December 20th, 2016. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. We have openings on several committees. Please refer to the Board of Selectmen page on our website for a listing and application. Donations to the food pantry can be made at Shane Gives Thanks located in Carver Square. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll recite the prayer this evening.
(inaudible)
And now for our community prayer. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we've been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen. Now, we reached the point at the start of our meeting for citizen participation. This is a moment when, if there are any citizens that would like to address the board, can have up to three minutes to bring a matter to the board's attention. We'd like to reserve our 10 minutes for this opportunity. So, again, we do ask that we leave it to three minutes. Is there anybody that wanted to address the board?
Yes.
Please step up to the microphone, please, and name an address, if you would.
Nancy Ryan, 180 Tremont Street. I just want to thank everyone who generously donated to the Santa Is for Seniors this year. This was the biggest year that we've had. We were able to give to all three nursing homes in Plymouth, and we had over 400 gifts.
Wow, excellent.
So, it was just, it was just wonderful. So, that's all I wanted to say. Just thank you so very much, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I know you're one of the big ringleaders, so thank you for your efforts in pulling this together, and we'll start gearing up to make it even bigger next year.
Good. That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Was there anyone else that wanted to address the board this evening? There being no one, we'll now have the report and recommendations of the Tax Relief Committee. I'm pleased to say that I see almost all the members of the Tax Relief Committee here. And I know Andy Carterelli will be here shortly, but the members of the committee are Bill Duggan, Madeline Joyce, Nancy Ryan, Andy Carterelli, and Al Winters. And as I say, I believe Andy will be here, so we'll have, and myself, so that we'll have the full committee here. The committee, the Tax Relief Committee, is a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen. It was established last December, I believe. We started meeting in January. It was really sort of at the suggestion of Bill Duggan during, I believe, citizen participation, that shouldn't there be some attempt made to help relieve seniors of the tax burden that they have to handle as they get older, when they're no longer in their working prime? Isn't there something we could do? And so, the committee got together, and the first couple of meetings, we basically just sort of brainstormed ideas. We really, at the time, didn't have the knowledge that we gained later, which is that the state has a very tight control over what we can do. We had all sorts of really creative ideas that after spending a lot of time crunching data, and by the way, I want to give thanks to, we had Assessor Ellen Blanchard helping us with the data. Al Winters did a big job on spreadsheets. Fire Chief Craig Weston, Finance Director, Meg, what?
Meg Lemay.
Meg Lemay, thank you. And also, Micah Milonowski visited us for one of our meetings, and so everyone helped crunch all these numbers. And we did this great job crunching all these numbers, only to subsequently find out that we basically have to get the state's approval for pretty much anything that we want to do. So, in the course of our meetings, we consulted with Susan Gifford and found out that there was actually a bill that was circulating through the State House that would, the three major points, by the way, were: you're age 65, you own your own residence in the community for at least 10 years, and then income qualified. That sort of is what we sort of gathered around. We had more liberal ideas. We had very simple ideas that we wanted to pursue, but the bill that we found at the State House level, those were the three major components. And to get anything passed at the state level, we figured it was best to model it after that. Well, Representative Gifford told us that that bill had had three readings and basically was going off to where bills die and wasn't going anywhere. So, we did discover, though, that the towns of Sudbury, Wayland, and I think Reading passed home rule petitions, essentially doing the same thing. And so, we, and again, we sort of found this out as we went on, and Bill did some more digging and worked with some, actually was tracking people down at the State House, getting researchers and whatnot. So, we got three copies, which are in your packets, the Reading Bill, sort of just a template where the selectmen each year would determine what the tax break would be for seniors, or what the tax break would be, the tax reduction would be, or the other template is what the property exemption would be. So, you could say, "We're going to forgive for people 65 and older the first $300,000 of their home value." So, three creative ways. Right now, all that paperwork is in with Town Council. They're reviewing it. They're going to come back to us with a recommendation. And, but, so, what we'd do, what we'd like to do, what the Tax Relief Committee is asking, is that we reserve an article space for this meeting, this year's town meeting, in which we would insert the one that makes most sense to the board, based on the recommendations from the Tax Relief Committee, and let town meeting vote on whether they want to do, whether they want to support this. Normally, there's what's called the circuit breaker, trigger, which is income-based, and, you know, we'll get the details on that. And again, the board can decide which they feel is most appropriate. But again, it is the recommendation that we do pursue this. Now, it's likely that before, we know because we've got other home rule petitions that have gone to the state, that sometimes they can wander around up there themselves. That was the experience of some of these communities. But the word that we got back from Representative Gifford was that the leaders at the State House are saying, "Wait a minute. There are 351 cities and towns. We're not going to do this drip, drip, drip of one home rule petition, then another home rule petition, and another home rule petition." So, there is every hope in this season of miracles that the state may actually start moving forward with a statewide policy that can be adopted by every town, instead of every town having to do their own home rule petition. However, since it's already been out a year and a half since this first bill was filed and it's gone nowhere, Representative Gifford's suggestion was, "Get our home rule petition in, and when it comes to it, when it comes to town meeting, if it's endorsed, we get it into the State House, hope that we get it passed, since they've already passed three of them, and maybe by that time, the state has acted." But rather than wait to see if the state acts and we're that far behind, that much further behind the, in trying to get it done, this way, we have it in process. So, that's what we're asking the board tonight, is to reserve a spot on the, on the town meeting warrant for this, for one of these articles, as decided upon when we get further review from the town council. Questions?
I move that we go ahead and reserve at least one spot for an article for home rule petition for senior discounts on property taxes.
I second that. Further discussion?
I really think we ought to push forward on it. I don't trust the State House. I know they work hard up there, but some things, like they said, you know, kind of get lost, so to speak, and I think it, you know, it behooves us to take, be very proactive in this, to do what we can to try to go ahead and help the seniors.
Very well. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, yes. Well, you have to come to the microphone, though, if you're going to discuss from the audience.
And identify yourself, Bill.
And identify yourself and give us your address. Bill is sort of the founder of the feast, as I indicated. It was his thought process over a year ago that sort of got us to where we are.
Bill Duggan, 285 Meadow Street. That letter that came to us, I think Susan sent it to us, that the Revenue Committee had, was going to present a bill to the next session to try and allow the towns to come up with their own plans, following a particular template that they had sent, the Reading Bill being. So, we haven't really fixed what we want to put on the, the town warrant yet, right?
No. As I say, I sent off the Reading Bill and the two templates off to Town Council to get their feedback on it. Once we get that, then it'll be the consideration of the board to determine which seems to be the best fit for the town, and that's the one we'll try to push forward.
Would we be able to get copies of the Reading Bill and the others two, too?
Sure. Well, I mean, you should, we had a copy of the Reading Bill, and you sent me copies of the others.
The only thing we got is this, this letter where they briefly mentioned the Reading Bill. I don't know, did we get copies of that?
I thought those came from you, the, the two templates, but certainly, you know what I'll do?
That was the, that...
The researcher gave those to you.
Anthony Sacco sent me this sort of a template of the...
Right. Those are the other two that we utilized.
But I didn't think they detailed the things for the Reading, well, anyhow, I'll check it.
Well, I attached the Reading Bill as well.
Okay.
It was in there. Yep. So, that, and we will probably before, when we know it's coming up, we'll get copies out to everybody for your review ahead of time.
Okay.
For public comment.
All right.
All right.
Well, thanks for everything you've done.
And I do...
Just sit down alone, please. Sorry.
Ms. Maroni, you are, once again, being disruptive.
I need attention at all times. I apologize.
Anyway, I would also just, I'm sorry Andy wasn't able to get here, but Bill Duggan, Al Winters, Nancy Ryan, and Madeline Joyce, I just want to thank you for all your efforts. We were in the little room next door here. The last meeting, we discovered Bill had some specialties that we weren't familiar with. And so that, but, we're going to let that go. It's good to know that he's a man for all seasons.
Thank you.
But I just want to thank you. It was, you know, we, it was good, good lively discussion, and I think we examined a lot of things. And again, thanks for all your efforts and time, so.
Yeah.
It's coming to fruition. We'll see where it goes. It may not happen overnight, but it will happen. Thanks for chairing. You've got to come forward if you want to speak. We don't have those microphones out in the audience yet. Yes.
I mean, Al Winters at 36 Melanie in Meadow Woods. The other thing we found out is that there are already things in place that can help seniors who are struggling or just want to make it a little bit easier, that the, that the town has. And if those, if we can continue and get those out to the public, that there will be some various little things, I guess, that will help some seniors. I guess one thing that we, we learned that sometimes, I guess, that tax can be deferred and end up as a lien on the house. And I, there are things, I think, that the town can do to get the word out so that some seniors can get some relief, independent of what we're doing here.
Thank you, Al. I appreciate you mentioning that, because that is one thing we also talked about doing, and the committee's sort of in a brief hiatus. We'll probably get going again in the, in the spring, but part of what we talked about was also trying to put together sort of a packet. The assessor's office has a lot of this stuff, but, for instance, what you were just referencing is that if you're a homeowner and you're in distress, you can work out an arrangement with the Town Treasurer's Office to defer your taxes for a period of time, in order to take that immediate stress off while you're dealing with whatever financial crisis you may have. And that was news to a lot of us, that that was even available as an option, so.
Right.
And there were other things of that type that we think it's important to get out there so that people, if they reach out to the town, we can advise them of those things.
They're already there, and people just have to know about them to come into Town Hall and talk to the right people, assessors or whomever, to get, to take advantage of it and get some relief.
Exactly. Thank you. Glad you brought that up. All right. So, again, my thanks to the Tax Relief Committee. And, oh, I guess I'll ask the board's permission that the Tax Relief Committee be authorized to continue meeting, and resume meeting, to work on more ideas about bringing tax relief, both knowledge of existing tax relief and explore other, other thoughts going forward?
Before we do that, don't we need to vote on the...
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't get that far. Yes, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll abstain. I didn't hear the topic, so I apologize. Route 128 traffic was not pretty tonight.
You'd agree, anyway.
I would, but it wouldn't be proper, since I didn't hear anything. You know I would agree.
And so, is, does someone want to make a motion that we can continue?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, absolutely.
There a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. We'll be back in touch in the spring.
That's a good way to do it.
That's my Billy Bolger.
I have a question.
Yes.
How do we plan to get out the information to the public of what's already available?
That's what we're going to get together and do. We're going to start aggregating, aggregating and put together just sort of like a central sheet, because right now, you can go to the assessor's office, and they got a pamphlet here and a paper here, and, you know, but we'd like to get it all in one, in one document that we can hand out.
But in the meantime, could something go up on the website indicating that they can get information about tax relief from the assessor's office?
Sure.
Or from the treasurer's office?
We can have something added to that, sure. Thank you. Good idea.
Great.
Okay, we move on now to the town administrator update.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I could, since we're talking about warrant articles, why don't I just quickly go through where we're at? Beyond the standard warrant articles we have for our budgets, for CPC, for free cash and everything, I'm going to just talk about the anomalies, if you will.
Because I think today's the deadline for articles.
Today is the deadline, yes. We're going to have some late bill articles here, too, I see. There's going to be a few zoning articles that are coming forward from the Planning Board, predominantly for some clarification of our bylaws and also as it relates to the renewal plan, where there's some properties that they want to rezone because, for appropriate reasons, into residential. So, we'll be having those. The Board of Selectmen is going to be sponsoring a rezoning article for the Sportsman Club for the very frontage, so that that can be continuous with the Village District for the first two acres of the property right next to the gas station, and that's part of our arrangement tied into the vote you're going to take later on tonight for the donation of land. We have two citizens petitions that have come in, and again, tonight is the deadline. One is for South Shore Community Action. There's a standard article that we receive every year for $5,000, and they do a lot of very positive things for the community. We do have a new one for just a good of a cause, and that's for Y-PAC, and I'm going to ask Sarah just to talk about that briefly.
Thank you. I think most people are familiar with the acronym Y-PAC, the Young People's Alliance of Carver. It's a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization in Carver, the first of its kind, actually, which was, we established it about three, four years ago. And the basic ultimate goal of Y-PAC is drug and substance abuse prevention in kids. It's for, it's targeted towards middle school kids, and it's primarily after-school programs. And what they do at Y-PAC is try to help kids with their schoolwork, with self-esteem issues, with bullying issues, you know, helping them to have a place, a safe place to go. A lot of these kids' families all have to work, so they go home, and there's no one there, which of course is no one's fault. That's just the way it is now. So, this gives them a place to go, people to look up to, people to work with. They work also with, their staff down there is actually 11th and 12th grade kids. And that is a wonderful thing, because integrating the older kids and the younger kids gives them role models to look up to. And we also have, everyone else is a volunteer, and all the adults are volunteers. So, we always have an adult present, at least one. I say we. I was a founding member and was the executive director, but I stepped down from that about six months ago. It's a great organization, and what they're really asking for is just some small amount from the town to kind of sustain them, something they can count on. It's tough running an organization like this on a shoestring. So, this is an article I wrote for them. They got all the signatures, you know, they really did the work, so that's what it's about.
And that's for $5,000.
That's for $5,000.
We also have a request from Mass DOT for the repair of the Rochester Road Bridge replacement, and with that, we'll be putting on an article so the Board of Selectmen can exercise its power of eminent domain, if necessary, for the right-of-way takings that are necessary for the bridge improvements.
You're finally going to pick...
Finally.
It's moving along. I don't want to say finally, because we haven't gotten to finally, but I will say we are moving along.
Somebody's talking about it.
Talking about it.
Michael, if, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
If I may, those right-of-way takings for the bridge, those would be temporary, right? Just for the work being done?
There may be some, they don't have the right-of-way plans completed. There may be some permanent easements or permanent takings for the footings, but I don't have that plan right now. And it does say if necessary, so we have to get it on the docket, so to speak, which is why we have it on, and the plans may adjust as is being designed.
So, hopefully, whoever's property is being taken will get a heads up if it's necessary.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, there's a whole process to go through there. I haven't seen the plans. You know, generally, these things are talking about like one or two feet wide to maybe five or 10 feet wide by...
Kind of like a sidewalk area.
Exactly. Yeah, very small area, and it's usually just made for the footings, if the right-of-way is not properly designed.
Just wanted that to be really clear. Taking is not a good word.
Yep.
Among the planning board articles, was there, weren't they working on one to try to strengthen the nitrification rules in town?
That is being done by the Board of Health, but it's tied into the Planning Board as well, so they are looking at that.
Is that one that may potentially be on, that is reserved for town meeting?
Yep. We have a whole packet of stuff that's reserved for them, as well as looking at some of the nuisance issues that are around, too.
Okay.
And again, these are all being sponsored through the Planning Board and over to Health.
All right.
So, nothing unusual is what I'm, you know, sometimes we have some things that scratch our heads. I'm not seeing anything like that at this point. So, we're done.
Well, you've got other updates.
Well, for that, yes. For the one. Moving forward, we do, we, again, I'm going to table this for the CERPED Region Electric Program.
He didn't have car trouble again tonight, did he?
Ah, yeah.
No, he's probably in traffic.
You know, the 128 issue was pretty bad. Helen was able to escape and get down here, but...
I believe it.
That didn't work out. Moving forward with the elementary school, I think as people are seeing, there's a lot of progress that's happening out there. They are putting in a bunch of the foundations, so those are going forward. Even we had the cold snap last week. They poured on Thursday. They did not pour on, on Friday, but more foundations are going in this week. They're also working with DEP to hook up the new well that'll be supplying the building, and once that's done, then they can finish the rest of the, the footings for the elementary school. So, so far, everything is going well. We, we don't have any major issues. We're working with the contractor and our project managers are on top of them, as they're supposed to be, representing us. So, you know, again, progress is moving forward, and we're happy to see that. As it relates to the fire station, the fire station is also moving forward. They're hoping to be operational in the middle of January. The shooting for January 15th is their operational day. With that, we would most likely be having an open house after the snow starts to melt, so we're looking at the first or second week in April before town meeting is when the committee would like to have the official open house. That'll allow the station to get up and running and work through all the bugs that happens when you transition to a new facility. But so far, that's, that's moving along well, too. It is still under budget. It will come in under budget. There will be some turnback that the committee will make once it's all said and done. So, great job and a hard work from a lot of people making that happen, but, you know, again, under budget and can't ask for anything more than that, particularly with the quality building that we're going to get out of that project. Also want to update you on the last meeting, we talked about the capital outlay budget, so that has been drafted and is submitted. Now, we're working on finalizing the department budgets for all town departments. Meg and I are crunching the numbers. We're close to getting this to a balanced number. It's just going back and fine-tuning a few things. We're not anticipating any reduction of services on the town side of the budget. So, you know, we, we have made, you have made tough decisions over the last couple of years, so you can live within a sustainable budget, and that's going to apply this year as well. So, I'm very confident that that's going to, to work out and will be balanced. The school committee and in working with the superintendent, you know, I've mentioned a few of the, the special revenue funds that we'll be looking to create for, with, with free cash, which includes setting up an unemployment fund out of that, which will potentially save between five and seven teachers being laid off. You know, I do want to emphasize that when the superintendent made his first presentation back in September, they were looking at in the low 20s for teachers' layoffs, if all teachers were laid off, and that's where the budget numbers were going to come in, because they have to cut $100, $1.1 million in order to balance their budget. With putting in this unemployment fund, as we did two years ago, this actually reduces that number down to around 15, again, if those cuts were all made by teachers. Right now, the superintendent is, you know, hopefully trying to get that number down a little bit lower than the 15, but there will be, you know, a handful or two of teachers' positions that will have to be, be, they call it RIF this year, laid off, just in order for them to, to meet their budget. So, they're working, we're working with them on that. We're also looking at putting together this utility anomaly fund, same thing with health care, and also the circuit breaker for special ed. As we've talked, if one or two students move into the district that we have no control over and we have to send them for out-of-district placement, it's $110,000. That money has to come from someplace, and this is a prime opportunity to use one-time money to do that until it can be absorbed into the budget next year, once the budget's been approved. So, we're trying to do as many of those things as we can to help them, and I know that that is appreciated by the, by the school. I think the last thing we heard is that, I think we talked about this at the last meeting, that the school committee did request to meet with the union. The union has voted not to open the contract and meet with the superintendent to go over this $1.1 million deficit. So, you know, that's why there, there definitely going to be, be some layoffs that will happen over the school. And I've reviewed the numbers. Meg has reviewed the numbers. The $1.1 million deficit is a real number, and that has to be, has to be dealt with. I think we know back in September, they had a $480,000 deficit that they, they closed with basically draining a bunch of their funds, and this is the residual that will happen with them.
Just to be clear, so everybody knows, this is FY '18. There's that $1.1 million shortage.
Correct.
And just to be clear, so the school union is, would prefer layoffs of the teachers instead of working with the town?
You can't really say that.
Why?
All you can say is, a request was made for the teachers' union to meet with the superintendent, and they declined to do that right now.
So, how can you say that that's not different than what I am saying? Is that they're refusing to try to work with the town, to me?
Well, you can't assume that, I think is what Alan's saying.
Well, by saying no, that you don't want to open up and at least discuss and have a conversation...
I think Alan's trying to not put words into people's mouths.
After...
I'm not putting words in. I'm looking at something that has taken place, and what has taken place is the school union said, "No, we are not going to open conversations." That's a direct act. In my opinion, I am not putting words in people's mouths. What I am saying is the union made a conscious effort not to try to work with the town and the school and... the school and Scott Neef to try to make this work as, as a town working together. That's what I'm saying. I'm not putting words in anyone's mouth, but I want to make it clear what, how I am reading into this.
Okay, that's the teachers' union.
Teachers' union.
Do we know if they've talked to any of the other unions on the school's side? Bus drivers and whatever ones else they have?
I do not know if they have. I know that as we've reviewed their budget and their contract, one of the challenging things is, this is the third year in their contract where the former superintendent had agreed to a 2% cost of living increase, which on the surface doesn't sound like a lot, but when you actually look at the teachers' contract, and this is very important, is that the steps that they have in their contract are, for the first nine steps, there are approximately 5% increases. So, if they've given a 2% COLA, then that gets added to the 5%, so anyone who's in steps one through nine is getting a 7% raise this year. On top of that, when you get to step 10, and whether or not this is a bachelor's or a master's or a master's with, with, you know, 30 credits, is that step 10 is a 12.5% increase from step nine to 10. So, you take that 12.5% and you add that COLA to it, that then brings, that group will then receive a 14.5% increase.
So, that's someone going from a nine to a 10.
Oh, I, I'm aware, thank you for explaining, but this is why I'm making it clear.
Yep, and, and just as comparison to that, is on the town side with all of our unions that we've negotiated, we are predominantly focused between each step as a 2% increase. So, each step is generally 2% up, not 5 or 14.5%. So, that's why we're able to, with our budgets, and as I said in the beginning of this presentation, that the town side, we're able to live within our 30% of the revenue that comes into, to, to the town side of the government, based upon, you know, how we built our contracts. And I think we've all demonstrated that everyone but the dispatchers are all at 50/50 healthcare for new hires, too, which also produces some long-term savings.
And, you know, and it's important to recognize the, you know, the cooperation and, you know, it was good negotiations with the clerical, with the police union, the non-union, so, I mean, there, it can, you know, if you have open dialogue and you're, you're polite with each other, you get stuff done.
Exactly.
And at this point, I think we're, we're best to leave it to the school committee and hope that they are able to, to, to find a meeting of the minds with the teachers' union and move forward.
I agree with that, Ron, but I think it's a disservice to the general public not being clear as to what is happening here, and that's why I'm glad that I made the statement so Michael could then elaborate on what not reopening and at least saying, "All right, let's talk about it." So, when we get the lash back, when these layoffs come, the parents are aware that Scott Neef, the school committee, and the Board of Selectmen have tried to work together in camaraderie with all of the unions, and that it's the teachers' union that chooses not to at least even discuss it.
I will also say that Scott Neef and, and his new business manager, Brad, Meg and I, we have been meeting pretty much every other day, and it's, it's a great working relationship because we're trying to help them where we can within the financial policies that town meeting has adopted for the town, so that we can maintain some level of sustainability with our economic forecast.
And as Michael said, you know, before, you know, they're, in the recent history and recent past, you know, there's always been the quote scare tactic, "Oh, we're going to lose teachers, going to lose teachers." Michael's absolutely right. This is a hard and fast number. That 1.1 million's not make-believe. It's something that Meg and Michael and Brad and Scott have hashed out, and there are going to be, have to be layoffs, unfortunately. So, I mean, there is no money coming, extra money coming from the town. There's no man up from heaven or the state house coming down, and we are where we're at.
And I think the, you know, the school committee is, is on top of this this year.
Oh, absolutely.
I think they've made it very clear that they know they have a structural problem with their contract, and they know that they have to solve that. And right now, with them and with the superintendent, they're looking at all scenarios, and they're doing that now without the, the, the interaction of the union at this point, so that, that could potentially make the cuts even deeper.
Anything else or updates?
Um, at this point, no.
All right, we'll move on to the Board of Selectmen update. We will start with Mr. Robertson.
I don't have any updates. I will say that it is the Christmas season, and there are guys in uniform and girls in uniform from this town, and a nice note, a thought, or a card of thank you to, to them would be most appropriate. I can remember being years in the military and away from home, and just anything at all from home was just fantastic, and of course, it was letter-written days in those days, and I'm sure it's a little different now, but, but really, that's all I had. I just, great season and great town that we live in.
Thank you very much. Ms. Maroni?
Ms. Maroni. I just want to thank, especially since she's sitting in the audience, is Nancy Ryan, along with Stephanie Clardy, for organizing the Christmas caroling again this year to cheer up the seniors at the Life Care Center in Plymouth. Third or fourth year, correct, fourth year that they've been working hard to make this happen, and all the participants that volunteered, it was a great time. So, and I want to wish everyone a very merry Christmas and a happy Hanukkah, which is happening at the same time this year, and have a safe and happy New Year.
Ms. Hues.
I know, it's impromptu.
Never know where I'm going to go next.
I just wanted to point out to folks that the Shane Gives Thanks organization, which is also a nonprofit, had their bread-breaking ceremony on Saturday. Ron and I were able to attend. It was a really nice occasion. That little boy is something else, feen, his parents, too, his family as well. I, I do have a request into them to let me know whether or not we can make public the veterans group slash riding club, who did so much of the donations down there. I didn't want to just say it unless...
Even though you sort of just did.
There's lots of veterans groups, and there are lots of riding groups, I'm sure. Oh, excuse me.
Sorry.
I guess my time is up.
Apparently they're objecting to what you've said, Sarah.
So, I just wanted to point that out, and it is in the Carver Square Boulevard. It's on the backside, which I think is good because nobody likes to have to do something like that, to have to get food, so it's good that it's a little bit private back there. So, thank you all for your help, whoever did, and we wish it well.
Thank you. Mr. Dunham?
I was just waiting. I mean, you introduced everybody else. It's been in the newspaper, and I just want to make sure the board is fully aware, that there was some legal action that was taken against the town by former Officer Zadok. He filed a complaint, a charge of prohibited practice with the Department of Labor, Labor Basically, he's saying that we violated one of the statutes, and we got a ruling back from the Commonwealth Massachusetts Department of Labor Relations, basically finding us not at fault, no grounds, and that was as of December 12th. And last I knew from that date, he had 10 days to appeal. I don't know if he's appealed or not, but right now, the Department of Labor Relations found with the town that we did not violate any of the rules and regulations in his particular case. So, I want to make sure the board was fully aware of that. Also, just basically want to tell everybody out there to have a very merry Christmas and happy Hanukkah. I really hope everybody gets a chance to spend time with their family and loved ones. This is the time for that. As David said, think of those serving overseas. I spent a year at the end of the illusion chain, so I can, I know from where Dave speaks at concerning when the, our soldiers, sailors, Marines, airmen are away from home, especially this time of year, it is hard, so keep them in your thoughts and prayers, and I hope my fellow board members wish you, every one of you, a merry Christmas and happy Hanukkah.
You, too.
And that's it.
Thank you very much. And I would just add on the, on the Shane Gives Thanks, it was really, if you have a chance, stop in and see it. It's, they've got it set up beautifully. I believe that, that motorcycle group that you referred to is donating a freezer to them, so they'll have the ability to have frozen food there. They're going to get a refrigerator as well, and it just, it's, it's a great setup. They do need volunteers, so if anybody's interested in providing some hours, Crystal McGogan is the chair of the 501(c)(3), that is Shane Gives Thanks, and you can email Crystal at shangivstanks@comcast.net. shangivstanks@comcast.net, and just say that you'd be interested in providing some volunteer time. The more volunteers they get, the more they can be open, so that, just, again, it's shangivstanks@comcast.net. I'd also like to send a thank you out to the fire department. On two separate occasions recently, they delivered Santa to the tree lighting and to the Carver Elementary School, went to Wonderland, and they did a wonderful job, as they always do, so...
Was Santa able to get all the way up into the rescue? It's a long step.
As, as I understand it, Santa was very nimble and was like a jolly elf, was in and out without any issues.
He was, I saw him.
And then finally, just also, just along with my fellow board members, wishing all of you a very, very merry Christmas and a happy Hanukkah and a happy New Year, and just make sure you enjoy friends and family because it's, it's that special time of year. With that, we move on to the deed to acquire land from the Carver Sportsman's Club. Mr. Melonowski?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This was approved at town meeting to allow the town to barter with the Sportsman's Club. With that, the town accepted responsibility for hiring a contractor and utilizing the millings off of Route 58 to, in essence, regrade and to, to put a, a layer of these crust, millings onto the Sportsman's Club road. In exchange for that, and also a commitment from the selectmen to support a rezoning for the front two acres of their property, approximately two acres to village district, the Sportsman's Club is donating additional land tied into the central cemetery, and that will then, which is almost full, this will allow us to have some further expansion of the central cemetery for a significant period of time. So, again, this is one of those rare opportunities where it's a win-win for both parties, and, and we get something we can use for the long-term use of the town and the Sportsman's Club, who, you know, has some volunteer programs. I think they hold the, the firefighter's clam bake on there, and they also host some other nonprofit organizations, and now allows for better access back there.
They also have a fundraiser for scholarships for the schools, too.
Yeah, good breakfast.
So, what you have in your packet is, is you have the deed that's been prepared by town council, and you just need to vote to, to, to sign that. As you do see, it's for consideration of a dollar, and again, you know, there was some services that we provided to them.
Mr. Chair, I have, I have a question. How is there, how much land is the frontage on 58 that they want rezoned, and how is it zoned now?
So, on their frontage, let me first say, I left this number out, they're donating us 2.6 acres to expand to the central cemetery. The frontage that's on there is approximately two acres. It goes back, I think, 200 feet. I'm just going off memory right now.
It's probably longer than that, but go ahead.
Yeah, I believe that's the depth plus the front, the frontage, whatever the frontage is between the gas station and the cemetery, back, I believe it was 200 feet.
Oh, for the parcel that they're want rezoned?
Correct, correct.
Gotcha.
So, in essence, a parcel that would be very similar to the gas station parcel.
Okay.
And it would go from the gas station to the, to the cemetery, back about 200 feet.
And how is that zoned now?
Uh, I think it's zoned...
It's probably commercial.
No, it's, it's, no, it's, it's a residential zone, whatever the back is, the back open space zone. I think it's residential.
That's residential agricultural, yep.
Yeah.
So, they want it rezoned to village?
Village, right, which is what the gas station is and across the street.
May I ask why?
Why do they want it rezoned? They want it rezoned so that at some point in the future, if, you know, they need to secure some additional funding, they could sell that off as a development parcel and use that to pay for, you know, repairs to their building or something along those lines. And, you know, again, it's limited to, I believe it's back 200 feet, so it's just limited for that front, which is consistent with the gas station that's there.
Right.
And consistent with what's across the street, so it's actually a good use for the town also to, you know, expand that little village there.
Yeah, okay.
Now, whether or not town meeting approves it, we have no control over that, but as part of this agreement, we agreed we would support putting it on the ballot for a rezoning effort.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the signing of the deed?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Being done, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Is that something you need us to sign tonight?
Uh, yes, in the other room.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a review of the committee handbook. Everybody should have got a copy of the Town of Carver Committee and Board Handbook. I want to give, first of all, Elaine Weston the, you know, 99% of the credit for pulling this together. We got to talking about it, and I have a couple of friends that I work with that are selectmen and in other communities.
Or towns.
And in inquiring about it, they didn't have, one of them had a sort of a half handbook, another had no handbook, and as Elaine went around to local communities, none of them had handbooks. And the, the premise behind this is that when people volunteer to be on committees, they're really coming in cold in the municipal government. They have really no idea how town government works. So, this is a handbook that walks them through policies, open meeting laws, you know, communication guidelines. It's just really sort of something that before they step in and take over, they, they actually will understand how meetings need to be posted and all the, the need for, you know, proper acknowledgement with the public and keeping things transparent. So, I think it's a great idea. She did a great job pulling it together. So, I, I'd ask just for basically the board's blessing. I think the idea is that it'll be sent out to all the board committee and members of the staff, and everyone simply, you know, emails back an acknowledgement that they received it.
So, Ron, I'd like to ask that we have a little time to look at it first before we take a vote?
Well, it's been in your packet since last week.
Well, it's, it's quite a long document.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Would you like us to put that over for your first meeting in January?
Okay.
How's that? Is that all right?
Well, I'm just a little disappointed. We had it, we had it out there for a while, but, okay. We'll put it off till January.
On this, you know, would this be something that we could have in print ready for those who want to decide to run for office?
I don't know how much it, it actually deals with running for office.
No, but I mean, just so, you know, if someone's running for a position, they have a better idea of, you know, how it works if they are to get elected, or, you know, or may they, may just look after look at that and decide, "Nah, I don't think so." You know, I don't think it would do any harm.
Oh, absolutely not, no. I mean, I think the idea is to save trees, is to get it out to everybody electronically so that they can have it in their files. But certainly, I, my thought process was that, yeah, if anyone ever wants a hard copy, you know, not everyone has a computer at home.
Or at least refer them to the webpage, because this will be on the website.
Oh, absolutely, no, I think that makes all the sense in the world, sure, absolutely. Okay, so Carrie, we can put that on the agenda for the first meeting in January? All right, next item on the agenda is the urban renewal hearing process review, and I think Alan will turn to you to walk us through this.
Okay, first off, so in case people don't know, the Redevelopment Authority met last night, and they unanimously accepted the draft urban renewal plan for, to go through its next step, which will be the planning board, the planning board, the planning board will review it to take, and all they're doing is saying, "Is this in agreement with our current master plan?" There was a little discussion because the master plan's being updated, and they hope to be able to bring that to town meeting, but this urban renewal plan has to be in, you know, in agreement with the urban, the master plan as of, from 2001, because that's the last one that was voted, so that's the one that was in effect. So, from there, they believe Planning Board will be meeting December 27th. So from there, they believe planning board will be meeting December 27th. And then they'll be coming to us for our public hearing on January 5th.
Is that a joint meeting with the RDA?
I would think we should have at least the chairman of the RDA here.
Okay, but it's not a combined vote of the two committees?
If I could just on that, I do think it's appropriate to have it as a joint meeting because you could also have the RDA that hears information in the public hearing, that they may want to make some adjustments to it as well. But they're not obligated to, they don't have to vote on it again from the standpoint, it's not a joint vote that happens. But again, this is a public hearing for this project, so the more information that's taken back from both parties can be done. They may come back and say, based on what they heard, they want to make a few changes to it. Or they may say, no, we're ready to go forward as is, and then they ask you to adopt it from there. Same token, you can have some changes you want them to incorporate. So I would definitely have it as a standing meeting for both committees, but you're taking separate independent votes to move this forward.
I would also, you know, at least, I was originally thinking have a member of the planning board to report back what they found. As long as Michael has the information, I don't see where we have to have it, but it would be nice. I've been attending a lot of the RDA meetings and hearing a lot of the public input and whatnot. I would kind of like to think it'd be nice if we could have the chairman of the North Carver Water District here in case we have any questions.
I'm sorry, Alan, what did you say that we don't really need to know, but it would be nice?
No, we'd need to, I'd like to see the chairman of the planning board here, just to review that, you know, confirm that they went ahead and gave it its blessings, but it wouldn't be mandatory because, you know, Michael will know about it. So if he could contend, that would be a good thing.
They're meeting before the 5th, the planning board?
27th.
To make sure that, to vote that this is consistent with the plans.
So I figured we'd hear from the RDA first, then the planning board. And I originally was thinking, first up to speak either for or against, to give us their views, would be Carver residents who own property that's within the urban renewal area itself. That would be people that, you know, their property is set for acquisition. They, I would have them have the first right. Then second would be property owners, you know, owners of property that are scheduled for acquisition that may not be residents of Carver. Because there are some properties up within it that are not owned by Carver residents. Then from there, it would be Carver residents that are outside of the urban renewal plan area, basically any resident in Carver. Then it would be Plimpton residents, specifically those that live in along Heather's Path and that development. They have a keen interest in this. And then open it up to anybody else that would want to go ahead and voice an opinion.
So Alan, it sounds like you want to add a number between three and four?
Yeah, yeah, it would actually be, yeah.
So Plimpton residents?
Three would be Carver, no, three would be Carver residents that own property.
Within the urban renewal area?
And then four, the new four would be other, you know, residents from other towns who own property. Because I believe some of the property is not owned by either Carver or Plimpton residents. And there are no Plimpton residents anymore that have property that are in the urban renewal plan area. Those have all been eliminated. So, but, you know, again, as borders to that, and actually, you know, we had a few people that are from other parts of Plimpton. And I would say at that, it's a Plimpton time to talk. I'm assuming we might be hearing from members of their board of selectmen. We've had one of their members attend a couple of, two or three of the RDA meetings. Then open, when we open up to other residents, I know we've had a couple of Plymouth residents actually coming. Now, Will Sinclair's done a very good job, even though there was no posted public comment period, at the end of each discussion in their meetings, when they've gone ahead and been working, you know, discussing the urban renewal plan, he has opened it up so, you know, people that are in attendance can go ahead and make comments, where he didn't have to do it. But he was trying to be very open with this and I think he should be commended for allowing that much discussion during their meetings when they didn't have a quote, "public comment period."
So they didn't have a public hearing?
No, we're the only ones that have public hearings on it. And, you know, if you want, I can give you a little flavor of some of the, a lot of the questions that have come. A lot of the questions and things that have been pointed out in the RDA meetings are actually beyond the scope of the UPR. They're more of what would happen, you know, what if, what's approved. It's a lot of stuff that the planning board would have to answer once a plan is submitted to them. Things like buffering and amount of traffic and things like that, that's all done by the planning board. That's not what this is, at least as far as I can, you know, my interpretation of it, really is not really what this UPR is for. I mean, does it, everything is a general outline. There was a lot of heartburn because the RDA came up with, you know, potential buildings on the plots of land. Nothing is settled. I mean, there could be, the developer, if he wanted to, he could just make one huge building, as long as it's within our town bylaws. It was just to try to give an idea. So I think it's going to be important that when we're discussing it, that we realize that what's in the UPR plan, and it's wonderful reading, it's yeethick. Is that on the website yet?
I believe it is, yes.
I would highly recommend that each member of the board at least review it.
Does that have a site plan with it?
It does.
It does. It also has a very important document in there, which is the agreement between the developer and the RDA. And I would strongly recommend that everybody take a good close look at that. And anybody at home that's watching this right now, who's got an interest in this, go to the town website. Knowledge is power and it's important that everybody take a look at it. So that would be my recommendation. So actually, so getting back to this, I'm looking at seven steps. RDA, planning board, Carver residents with land, non-Carver residents with land that to be taken, then the rest, other Carver residents, Plimpton residents, and then anybody else.
And I also had suggested, and I think Mr. Sinclair and Mr. Malinowski will arrange for anyone that would like to do a site walk to avoid doing, needing to post a meeting, no more than two select people at a time. But I think if any of you are interested in actually going.
I would like to do that.
You can, you can do a site walk. This has been decided by Copeland and Page quite a long time ago. The whole board can be there as long as no decision is made. That's why the Conservation Commission.
Doesn't have to be posted?
No, it's not a public meeting. You're not, you're not making a decision. You're just there, you're looking at the site, you're like, okay, have a nice day, you go home.
And that might be easier on the folks involved then, if that's the case, so. Anyone that's interested though should contact, I guess go through Elaine maybe and just say, I'd be interested in doing it. And then if we get something set up, they'll get back to us.
Michael, want to tell Elaine I'm interested?
Michael, will you tell Elaine I'm interested?
Carrie, you tell Elaine that I'm interested?
Anyone else interested?
I'm interested.
Of course. We're just going to send her an email right now. Because we have laptops.
So we'll coordinate that and try to find some times that work out for everybody. Again, we don't mind doing multiple tours and Will Sinclair's going to take care of being part of that.
Just realize though that the meeting is January 5th.
Right.
So it's a fairly short window to get up there and walk around.
How about we go by what the temperature's going to be?
We will do.
Do it impromptu.
It's a big site too, it's over 100 acres.
So some of it may just be driving, then actual walking too, which we could accomplish there. If I could, Mr. Chairman, just for, put a little context into this. You know, there's been a lot of talk about this over the last seven months since the redevelopment authority started to try to send notices out to all the neighbors and everybody involved, trying to get people involved. I think at one point we may add 100 people come to the meetings. And in our last meeting where they voted this, it was down to 20, which I think demonstrates through a public process, as they've worked through the plans, they've addressed many, many concerns and issues and provided clarity to the public that was there. But this plan has been worked on by the town and the town has wanted to have development in that area for the last 20-plus years. And that's been the area that's been designated for development. With that, the town went forward and spent about $7-plus million on putting in a new water treatment facility so that you would be able to have future development down there. As we know, we're subsidizing that every year through our free cash because they don't have enough revenue coming in to pay for the debt service. You heard me speak early this morning, this evening about the deficit that this school has of the $1.1 million and that is going to impact teachers, there are going to be layoffs. You know, part of that is tied into the contract that was negotiated. But more importantly, Carver has a fundamental issue that we do not generate a lot of new money every year. So we have to find ways to live within what our financial forecast is so we can be sustainable. This project, and again, there's no guarantees that this will be developed. This just makes it more likely that it'll be developed because it can, once this plan's been approved. The plan calls for building up to 1.8 million, 1.85 million square feet of development. That would have a value of close to $200 million if it was built. And again, I am using the word ifs because there's no guarantees in anything that's going to be done here. So if that happens, and this is a step to getting us to more likelihood that it would, that'll create up to 1,500 new jobs. More importantly, from a tax revenue standpoint, the developer's going to have to put in additional $32 million of infrastructure improvements, of which the town is required to pay $0 of that. So as Alan mentioned, there's a developer's agreement that the redevelopment authority negotiated with the developer using town council. And this clearly states that the developer is on the hook for any and all expenses to the project. Yes, they can, we will help them secure state and federal grants, but we're not putting any town taxpayer dollars into this project. The question's been asked, well, how much have we spent so far on the project? And the answer is, the only thing we have spent is we've allowed staff to work on the project. Short of staff time, the town has spent $0 on this project so far. It's all been funded by the developer.
And also that agreement, it really needs to be pointed out as you're reading through it, that was written by our town council. That wasn't the developer's lawyer. This was our town council looking out for, you know, the town, so.
And I'll say it's a very one-sided agreement that protects the town and that was the instruction that we had given to town council. But with that, you know, potentially building up to 1.85 billion square feet of development, that has the potential of generating about $5 million in taxes to the Town of Carver. Right now, we have to give half of that to the North Carver Water District to pay off their $7 million worth of debt. But once that's done, then that would all come to the town. And, you know, as you look at, to give you some comparison, is this year, we're anticipating collecting $23.6 million in tax revenue. Again, this has the potential, if it's developed, of generating up to $5 million of tax revenue from that development. And the town right now collects $23.6 million. So that is a huge, huge number in comparison to our budget. I'm not going to tell you it's going to happen. I'm not going to tell you when that $5 million is going to happen. What I am going to say, that if we, if the town doesn't continue to move this forward, it will never happen. And this is the step that needs to be done to help move this along. There will be, this is a tough decision that you all have to make. And you'll have to all look internally and figure out if you're comfortable with the plan that the redevelopment authority has done. But I have to emphasize, this is what's been in the master plan. This is what the redevelopment authority in essence has been directed to do via the master plan. And they've been working on it, as well as the town has invested into the North Carver Water District. So there will be some decisions in here that you may not normally be comfortable with. I just ask you to take a step back, look at it in context, understand that this is, you know, many years in the making and it's to benefit the entire community. There will be some that may have some impacts on here. They'll be justly compensated if that happens. But the big picture is potentially $5 million on a base of 23.6, which is our tax revenue.
That's why I'm really asking that each, you know, basically challenging each and every one of us to fully read the plan prior to, so, because as opposed to just, for me, for this public hearing, I don't want to just hear one-sided. I want to be able to be knowledgeable enough about the plan to ask questions back. Because I think part of this public hearing is going to have to be some give and take between those who come before us and us trying to get more information out. And if we don't know what the plan is, we won't really know what questions to ask these people that come before us. Now, my only question is, do we need to take a, have a motion that this will be the procedure we're going to follow?
I think we did actually vote that the last time, so since it's been modified, I'd suggest that perhaps it might be worthwhile to adopt it as the plan for the night of the 5th.
You got all that that I put in there? Or did I talk too fast for you?
You're going to clarify a couple in which sequence?
So seven steps.
Seven steps, yeah.
I'll make that motion to amend the original version. That has never been asked of me before.
It may never be asked of you again.
To speak into a microphone because people cannot hear me.
I think it's a great idea, I'll second that, yep.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. And, excuse me, I'm not sure if it was mentioned, but just, I thought an important development in the vote was that the plan that was finally adopted, there was a lot of discussion about the possible taking of private homeowners' land in the Town of Carver. And that's been completely eliminated from the final plan, as I understand it.
Two of the potential homeowners reached an agreement with the developer and the less potential, the touchers, their home and property was completely removed from the urban renewal plan.
So no, there'll be no takings of anyone's home relating to this plan.
So, excuse me, what was the setback? You said some people be possibly impacted.
Well, there are, there are still some takings in the plan. There are, it's included in there. Part of those need to open up some of the roadway areas and, you know, the redevelopment authority has analyzed that. They had everything on the table initially and they threw these public hearings and working with the developer, they were able to reduce that down.
It's property, it's property, not houses, right?
There is actually one house, or I believe maybe two, that they're in amongst the bogs. But one is a rental and the other one is vacant.
Right, right.
So, but that's why, you know, and that is all well laid out in the urban renewal plan that we're all going to have the homework assignment to read.
The property that created the most angst, rightly so, by the owners that are there, that one, without mentioning the people's names, has been taken off the plan, which is where there was unanimity in the people that were protesting the plan. It was specifically because of that property that has been removed. There are some other properties that are in there, so there is a component of eminent domain in here. But it's to look at for the greater good of the community, to look at the possibility of bringing in that additional tax revenue that could help sustain our economic base and pay for our services.
Okay.
Should be fun on the 5th.
Is it possible to have that printed out? Because when I.
We will have these printed out. There's a couple of minor changes that happened based on the plan for this. And what we'll do is we'll make sure we get printed copies and we'll give everybody a call so they'll be in your box.
Okay, good.
So if you go to.
No, I understand that, but it would be easier if they could.
Yeah, well, I just wanted the public to know that if you go to carverma.org and just search for the urban renewal plan, it's right there.
Right, thank you for printing it.
And I don't know if that's been updated since Monday night, but it's, the only difference.
December 7th, 2005. Oh, yeah, never mind, sorry.
There were some, yeah, there were some changes that were made.
And the only change that happened in there, so Sarah, what you're looking at is probably 99.9% correct. The only substantive change that happened was the one residential property was completely taken off the partial to-be-acquired list. And that requires many edits to the document. I don't know if that's been done yet, but that's the only change that you would find within here.
Okay.
And just one last question?
Sure.
Thank you. The properties that are still potentially going to go in regard to eminent domain, is there a sense of how the owners feel about it? Are they coming to an acceptance or are they still?
That's why I would, I would hope, yeah, I've been, these as many as Michael, not more. not more. And that's why I would strongly recommend that anybody, and ask, that anybody that has property within the urban renewal plan to come to that, because I personally want to hear from each and every property owner in there. And to this point, to your point, they haven't been coming to the meetings. They're, but, most of them have, but I know of at least two properties where those owners have not shown any, thus far have not shown any interest in coming-
They're being notified, but I'm not attending.
Of course, yeah, they're being notified.
So when is our public hearing?
Ju, January fifth, seven p.m.
Are we going to do something to notify property owners?
It's already been in the paper once, Marlon is putting it in the paper again.
Can't we send them a letter?
Plus, everybody's getting certified letters.
Okay.
Green card.
Yeah, green card.
Didn't we adopt that last meeting?
Sarah brought up the green card and we're sending green cards out.
Thank you.
Still sending green cards out.
That's awesome, I appreciate it, and so will they.
If we could have either the chairman or the town administrator get with Area 58, I would like to see notices put on all three channels. Normally, that would just go on the government channel, I'd like to see it go on the school channel and the local access channel.
And have them put it out on YouTube as well, for those who don't have cable.
Would it be improper if we could make phone calls to these homes? Just in, I don't mean to say people have a responsibility to open up their mail, however, I am full disclosure, I get so much junk mail now that I literally come home and scan it, and sometimes I miss things. So just so we can say we did everything humanly possible, is it wrong to make phone calls to the homes?
What I can say is that-
Homes or properties?
They're not homes. Well, that's, well, if we had, yeah, there's nowhere-
We can do anything, but let me just say this, is that every property that's in the plan-
Yeah.
-has knowledge that they're in the plan, they've either been at a few meetings-
Okay, okay.
They may be choosing not to come back in here. I will say, under most circumstances, sometimes there's an economic benefit for someone to be in a plan where there's potentially going to be a taking because they may get more than the fair market value. So that's why you're probably questioning, why aren't we hearing from these people? Well, they may have gotten legal advice and told to-
Well, you can surmise that because they haven't been responding, that they don't have an issue with it, but we don't like to assume either, so.
But come, come the fifth, if they don't, if people don't, we're going to have to assume that they obviously don't have a problem with the plan. That's why I really stress that we need the people, not only the butters, but also, but especially those who own land that are scheduled, that would, under the plan, would have their property acquired, which is the verbiage from the plan. We really need you here on the fifth.
I mean, I will say from experience, the, the only thing that's ever challenged with these plans is the valuation, and that valuation tends to go in front of a jury, and juries are very sympathetic.
To the consumer.
To the consumer.
And by the way, the agreement with the developer, they cover the court costs.
Okay.
And the payment cost, all the costs.
That's important.
Oh, I've done, I've, I've-
That's important.
This is something, this is, is not, you know, there's been, well, you know, the town's going to have to pay for this. We're not paying for anything, and I think you'll see that when you read the agreement with the, between the RDA and the developer.
Okay, we'll move on to the minutes of December sixth. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we accept the minutes of December sixth.
I have two minor, two very minor changes.
Okay.
And they were in the board of selectmen comment period. The young lady mentioned, her name is spelled with a C in the minutes, it should be spelled with an H. And I also just wanted to add the sentence that I had used in, in the meeting about local agriculture, why I thought it was so important, because it helps us in our food security.
Any other amendments or changes?
I move we accept it with the, with the so-stated amendments.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We have a request for a one-day license for the annual game supper at the Carver Sportsman's Club. It'll be on January twenty-seventh.
I move we approve.
There's a second? Further discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Is there any need for an executive session tonight?
Very briefly.
Oh, you pulled a fast one on.
I did.
All right, so I'll accept a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respective collective bargaining negotiations with unions and for non-union negotiations and with all non-union personnel not under contract, and strategy for litigation and for purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate that may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town if held in open session, and to reconvene in open session for purpose of adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? How's Alan Dunham vote?
Alan Dunham votes aye.
Alan Maroney votes aye.
Ron Clark votes aye.
Tara Humes votes aye.
Dave Robertson aye.
And we will not, we will come back to-
Open session.
Open session in order to adjourn only.
Should we be concerned about the siren?
No.
No.